Good evening. I'm Mayor Mark North. I'd like to welcome everybody here to the Hudson Village City Commission Regular Session dated May 9, 2023. Would all present please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
I would ask all present to observe a moment of silence before we begin the agenda. Thank you. Before I open up to public comments, I believe there's one Commissioner roll call first. Thank you.
Commissioner Bullheys.
Here.
Branson.
Here.
Debray.
Here.
Groth.
Here.
Larrar.
Here.
Nitre.
Here.
Mayor Northrop.
Here. All Commissioners are here. Before I start the agenda item, there is one Commissioner seeking a change.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I would move that we change the agenda tonight and strike item 16.
Requesting to strike item 16, which is a motion from the local officer's compensation.
I second this.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any question discussion? As short of us, we can't go without our own.
There's procedural issues and no, we can't.
A procedural issue. We can't do that. We can't do that. Very well. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Strike item 16 from the agenda. Moving on to all the other consent agenda items here, three through eight minutes of City Commission Regular Session dated April 11, minutes of City Commission Work Session dated April 25, minutes of Act 198 Committee Meeting dated April 11, minutes of the Planning Commission Regular Session dated April 29, minutes of the Library Advisory Board dated April 18, and minutes of the Local Officers Compensation Committee Meeting dated April 26. Are there any changes to those minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and supported. Any other discussion? Do I need a roll call on this one, or that's just a?
No, you're good.
I'm a good at the voice count. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Agenda consent items are approved. Moving on to item number nine, which is the Public Hearing on Commercial Rehab Exemption Certificate 3424 Chicago Drive. At this time, I would like to open the public hearing. If there's anybody from the public that chooses to address the commission, please do so now and step to the podium. Seeing and hearing none, I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion for this to be passed.
Make a motion to approve Resolution Number 23-1766, approving the application of 3424 Chicago Drive LLC for a commercial rehabilitation exemption certificate for the amount of $5,899,021 for a period of 10 years.
Support. It's been moved and supported. This came out of the DDA. I don't know, Jack, you're a member. Do you want to speak to this, or?
Pretty straightforward. It's a process that we've been moving through. This is just the next step.
I'd just like to note that I did ask, they come with additional information, that this compares to the first approval we did with his rehabilitation exemption for Scott Gerling's on Hudsonville Center, although this is a bigger project and it does front the city on three sides instead of just two sides. And this is nearly double the cost of the first one. So this is in terms of the framework similar to the first go around where Scott launched the first development downtown. Are there any questions on this or discussion? And Jack, we've all been working this for quite a while in the DDA, and I know that Kayla's been very involved too. So issue rolls her eyes at me. Yes, it's been a big, it's been a big one. We've all worked to make this happen. So we have a lot of skin in this one game. End of the discussion. Tyler, you got anything for in front of that? Okay. I will call for the roll. City Clerk?
Commissioner Groth.
Yes.
Larrar.
Yes.
Bullheys.
Yes.
Branson.
Yes.
Debray.
Yes.
Nitre.
Yes.
Mayor Northrop.
Yes. Before I move on to new business, I did not see anybody here from Lake Shore Advantage. You are. Okay, so I have to apologize.
I'm wrong at all. So I was lucky. I had 10 copies in my tab, you guys.
All right, thanks.
I understand you guys see Jennifer. She came through for a senior hearing, so.
I've known Jennifer a long time. As you well know, she's been a great champion for our business.
I told her, I think there was a hearing I was in year four, and you were like, I just want to see Jennifer Owens. And I was like, Jennifer, you gotta get to Hudson, Mark. Just sing your praises over there. So in that activity, I was like, make sure Jennifer gets Hudson.
You guys have done a lot for the, for West Michigan and manufacturing in particular. It's, a lot of us come from the industry, so it's, we know, we know what you do.
Your presentation for me right now, it's perfect. So again, it's a lot of familiar faces, a couple of new faces. So my name is Greg King. I am the Senior Business Solutions Manager for Lake Shore Advantage. We're the economic development agency for Alleghen and Ottawa Counties. It's our 20th year anniversary doing this work because they're up in Holland, Zealand, and have branched out ever since, kind of from our humble beginnings. We now try to work with over 700 manufacturing companies. We have in the two counties, including food processors, tech companies, automotive entrepreneurs, et cetera. So it's a lot going on. So today, I don't have a hearing for either company. Today is kind of our annual presentations for you guys. So part of my work at Lake Shore Advantage, and part of our team's work at Lake Shore Advantage, is during retention visits with all of our companies. We try to get up to 350 companies every year, and of those 350, we do 120 retention visits where we kind of sit down with the plant manager, CEO, operations manager, and go through a very detailed list of questions, and then aggregate that data into a report, and that kind of gives us a snapshot of how our region is doing. So we get companies from all, gosh, however many municipalities, all different industries, all different sizes, just to get a pretty broad report. So what we have in front of you are two documents. One is the actual industry trends report, hot off the press, because it's the fourth printing. It's really in-demand documents. You've got that in front of you, as well as a list of some of the projects and achievements we had last year. I don't believe I had that for you last time I was here. So I'll just go to a brief presentation. This is actually, because it's our 20th anniversary, we're in the middle of a rebrand. So we're now kind of going off of the GPS. So this is a, if I can get, grow, there we go, grow plan and solve. So our overall goal being ensuring current and future innovations want to live and work in a vibrant economy. So we'll kind of go through each of these three pillars. So growing companies. So last year, as you can see on that expansion list, we had 33 successful projects, two of the largest we've ever had with LG Energy and Gentex, as well as a number of small projects. I heard Scott Gerling was mentioned today. He was behind several projects over in Zealand last year. And for those projects, that was about $436 million in leveraged funds and just over 2,000 new or attained jobs. So that is the busiest year we've ever had. I don't expect us to do another 33 projects this year, but we just saw so many companies coming to us, adding on square footage, looking for jobs, automating, and we heterized the engagement. So some data points here from the surveys that we did. So 91% of companies reported that their total company sales were increasing or stable compared to 83% in 2021. I think there's like 50 graphics in here. 97% reported market share was increasing or stable, which is pretty similar to 2021. And then 82% were introducing new product services and capabilities, down a bit from 2021. So overall, very healthy growth for our companies. I think what we saw with the pandemic, companies getting into different industries, getting into different niches in the market. A lot of companies who weren't exporting to even Canada, Mexico, starting to do so. A lot of companies getting into automation, are spinning out integration divisions. So not surprised by some of the stuff we saw. There we go. So when it comes to expansion plans, we always ask companies, you know, what are they thinking? What are they doing? 60% of companies are expanding the next few years compared to 69%. I want to say it's because we had all these projects last year. I think you're seeing some slowdown in growth of interest rates, labor challenges. A lot of companies who added on last year, we're not going to talk about Gentex and LG, but a lot of those projects were adding 10,000 square feet, two jobs, a handful of space for inventory, R and D. And you kind of saw this bear of the data, the average expansion plans for the next few years, around $8 million, 20 new jobs, about 50,000 square feet. If you're asking me, three years ago, it would have been $20 million, 50 new jobs, and, you know, 80,000 square feet. So I guess the labor challenges and other challenges are, you know, coming to the fore. We keep hearing about it. You're starting to see businesses start to take that into consideration. So planning for all this growth, and a big part of that is manufacturing. At Lake Shore Advantage, we primarily work with manufacturing companies, entrepreneurs. We don't do so much on the commercial retail side. We have a lot of resource partners. Hudsonville Chamber of Commerce is one of them, but does an amazing jobs. And we focus on manufacturing here in West Michigan. Manufacturing is 40% of the economy. It has one of the largest multiplier effects, meaning that for every one job in manufacturing, it creates 1.8 to 2 jobs in the community through salons, banks, et cetera. So manufacturing, extremely important. This is kind of what we saw with the job growth through the surveys and through some other data. The top growing industries, again, specific to our two counties, computer electronic product manufacturing, electrical equipment appliance, equipment manufacturing, food manufacturing, machinery, miscellaneous. So those are based on NICS codes, but you're seeing again a lot in that automation, electrical sector, grow. I kind of already hinted at talent challenges. We did see a lot of supply chain challenges in 2022. Those have kind of dropped off a little bit, but the aluminum, the wood, steel, the garage doors. There's a, gosh, it was an 18-month lead time for a certain garage door for some of our industrial manufacturers. They just had it open or topped. I thought that was fascinating to hear about, but now the challenges are primarily around electrical components, one-off niche items. You don't see too much around the raw materials. Or what you're seeing, and probably getting ahead of myself a little bit, is the companies who are outsourcing to China and Vietnam and Mexico have really brought it back to the United States. We're seeing a lot of them come back. As you see tariffs, rising of inflation in China, costs, they're just bringing it back, working with local companies, which again leads to that growth. Supply chain disruptions reported in 2021 and 2022, you're going to the same. I talked about the lead times for garage doors. We'll have an 18-month lead time. It's going to be more than a year, so you're going to see that impact a lot of things. But I think when we do the data dump here this summer, we're going to see that really drop off as an experience that companies have. So 80% of companies were reporting supply chain disruptions. The most disrupted industries, I don't think you'll see this as any surprise, automotive manufacturing, furniture, product manufacturing, consumer goods, and transportation equipment. And then I, again, a little ahead of myself, but those disruptive items back in 2022, we're really getting steel and plastics in particular, and components such as semiconductor chips and electrical. I don't foresee the challenges in components going away anytime soon, but on the raw material, that should have been here soon. So about 40% of the companies we interviewed started bringing those outsourced goods or services back in-house. The particular services that we saw the highest demand for, bring it back, anodizing, painting, machining, and powder coating. Just working with local companies here, or just, I've got 10,000 extra square foot of space. I don't have all the inventory at. I'm going to start powder coating. I'm going to start painting. I'm going to start doing, adding a couple CNC machines as a value add to making our operations. So talk about all this growth. We talked about all these challenges. So what is Lake Shore Advantage doing to help solve these issues? We're not the solution to it, but we're likely to think that we're part of the solution for what's going on. Access to talent, top concern for employers, this is going to be the top concern for employers for the foreseeable future. Don't see it going away anytime soon, and not just something that, you know, we're seeing here in West Michigan or Michigan, but throughout the country as well. So 69% of companies interviewed reported recruitment problems in 2022 compared to 75% in 2021. So going a little bit down, but still a major challenge. So how can we help solve access to talent? So aligning recruitment and retention strategies to meet the priorities of the increasing number of non-traditional workers. We're seeing a lot of growth in flexible scheduling, in apps that companies can utilize to bring in, you know, someone who works from home, doesn't, for some reason, can't do the full-time job, but has experience in plastic injection molding. All right, well, I'll sign up on this app to do a week's worth of work at this company. They rate me, call it good. We see growth in that type of work. You know, aligning, I think Soundoff Signal is actually one of the companies that really led this with the internships in terms of, they have the summer-long internships, and at the end of the summer, I don't know if some of you guys have attended it, they'll do a report out, and Soundoff brings in the community. They bring in the entire leadership team to listen to these interns talk about some of the summer projects, whether or not they were successful. And you've seen that model take off with Gentex, Aworth, and now implementing similar strategies. I think Soundoff Signal was the first one, but don't, I mean, I'm happy to give them the credit, but don't take my word for it. But again, really aligning the traditional workforce with the non-traditional workforce, which is made up, I'll just focus on the rights of part-time workers, retirees, caregivers, students, contractors, working it that way. Some of the other leading practices, see smart manufacturing technologies in changing demographics. So smart manufacturing technologies, so 70% of companies are, I'm prepared to implement smart manufacturing. By smart manufacturing, I mean robotics, automation, enterprise resource planning systems, 3D printing, data sets, you know, there's, now you know, there's a whole thing on it. But as companies experience these labor challenges, what are we doing to help them adapt and grow? That, and automation is one of those. Top barriers for implementing those technologies are the lack of staff, the lack of staff expertise to implement, as well as the cost. And then our, just being cognizant of our demographic shifts in the United States, you know, the nation will become minority white in 2045. That's the way the population is projecting. So making sure that we are ahead of that and making rest practices around that as we see that change. And that change is also reflective of the population here in West Michigan as well. This is a really busy slide, but kind of as I alluded to earlier, Hoochdaw is itself a talent challenge. It's everyone. So these are just a smattering of the different organizations that we are working with to help with this, you know, different chambers of commerce, you know, the active work around employment surveys, engagement surveys, DEI, a lot of the workarounds, stuff with Talent First in particular, Talent Pathways. So if you started out as a high school student working at a job, okay, how do I advance further up to the company? You know, making sure that those are clearly illustrated to students. Working with West Michigan Works on the Going Pro Talent Fund. That's the $55 million state fund. That's allows for workforce hiring and training. From $40 million last year, $50 million this year. Hudsonville companies have been doing a really good job of getting some of that funding and drawing that down, but we continue to see that grow as companies look for funding to help with the shortage. Retention. So Lake Shore Advantage, we have HR Advisory Councils. So that is a group that Mandy Cooper, our Vice President of Strategic Initiatives, manages companies who are investors in Lake Shore Manage and their HR leaders and managers. So they meet on a bi-monthly basis, talking about 401K, talking about wage surveys, talking about kind of any given topic. And as much as they, there's a lot of competitors in that group, but because everyone's trying to collaborate, and West Michigan nice, you know, working together to, again, increase the overall employability and accreditation of our workers here. Working with Talent First, they came with a playbook last year. Definitely recommend checking that out. It's on their website, has a number of, 51 best practices for employers. And they did a much larger shoot than we did. And then having employers doing their own employee engagement surveys. So instead of just doing a meeting with your boss on an annual basis and getting, you know, hopefully a raise, you know, doing it on a quarterly basis, a monthly basis, just getting that engagement, I think, with their, whatever age you may be in the workforce, I think you're seeing more of a demand for a workplace culture, more time and engagement with your superiors. Surveys and just talking to your employees, it sounds simple, but that, those are some of the best things we're seeing coming out of this, these conversations. Some of the other attractive efforts, Hello West Michigan, that is based in the right place, but that is an initiative that we share with other economic development organizations that works to attract talent from outside, let's say, Michigan and outside of the United States, to bring them here for our larger companies. So they'll do a lot of the events. One of the events that they were really known for was rethink West Michigan. So it's the night before Thanksgiving, typically the biggest fire night. Well, everyone's, you know, if you've got family and your students have gone off, bring them back in, you know, get them to stay here and work here. We talked about the internships fairs already. There's a lot of funding now around for internships and apprenticeships and making sure that our companies are taking advantage of those with our wonderful accredited universities. And then developments. Talked about connecting to training funds such as the Going Pro Talent Fund, working with the GRCC and the Thompson M Tech Centers. We have the GRCC campus in Holland now, 1,500 students. They're already looking and expanding that space. I think they're just looking for a earmark for automation up there. So hopefully we'll have more news on that here soon. And then working with our employers on apprenticeships. Apprenticeships are the highest retention program initiative, whatever you might call the employer can have an apprenticeship again, is where you work at the facility for a certain amount of hours, and you go to class after hours. Apprenticeships have changed so much in the last 30 years. They used to know you, there are now over 158 different certified apprenticeships. They're more customizable, a lot more partnerships with the schools. So, and there's a ton of funding for those. And so working with companies to have an apprenticeship coordinator, work through those programs, and get that funding and get those individuals. And Q and A. I was updating slides today, but if you're interested in engaging with Lake Shore Advantage here soon, we do have an Economic Development 101 event at Royal Technologies on June 1st from 8 to 9:30. So all elected officials, municipal staff, you guys are all welcome to attend that event. It's on our website. I believe I sent it to Tyler at one point, but we'd love to see you guys there. So a bit of a data dump. I know I do this every year, but if you've got any questions, let me know.
What day was it again?
June 1.
June 1?
June 1, yep.
Yeah. Any questions for Greg from the DICE?
You guys will see me actually a couple more times. You've got some cool projects coming up in Hudsonville. So probably the next three City Commission meetings, I'm keeping Joe real busy right now, so.
Greg, I just have a couple, I wrote some companies down. Is there any relationship with West Michigan Beef? Because, you know, we had a large expansion. They're bringing in 50 new positions. Have you, have you been involved in that project?
Yes, we worked with them on the tax payments with you guys.
Right, I thought so. But they're not on the list here, that's why.
Because they were approved in January. So they'll be on the list for next year.
They'll be in '23, okay.
Yeah, I've got, I've got three projects that are already approved in Hudsonville that aren't on the 2020.
Okay, what are the other two? Apex?
Apex Controls was announced, and then unofficially Brightspan Building Products.
Okay, yeah, that was the other one. We just did the open house there. Now, if, if Gentex is bringing in 500, Royal should be bringing in about 150. So I don't, so I don't, is Royal going to see an expansion there too?
Yeah, if I, even if I knew, I don't know if I could tell you.
Yeah, okay, I, that, because if you see Gentex, Royal is, is a major supplier there. The other one I don't see here that might want to consider is Cedar Crest?
Yes, we are.
I don't know if there's a, if there's a relationship there, but they bought quite a bit of the property off Balsam. And the last time I talked to Robert, Rob, Robert? He indicated that there were some plans for expansion there, but he was kind of vague, and I just want to make sure you're aware of that too.
We are, can't say much more than we are actively working with them on a potential project.
I get that, I get that. There's business proprietary, but.
Yeah, also, the companies are getting us busy. So we've got a lot going on with Apex, with Huts, ITC, West Michigan Beef, Royal Technologies. Hudsonville has it happening right now, so.
The other thing too, and the commission's aware of this, by my calculation, we'll add about 400 new residential places in the, in the city limits in the course of, from 2000 to 2020 to 2025. So I expect to see a jump in the population from 8,000, probably near to 10,000, we hope. We'll probably call for a special census because that will change our revenue sharing. But we're critically aware of our responsibility to develop more housing, affordable housing for this workforce that you've laid out here for us. So consider us a partnership for the long haul.
Yes, housing, outside labor housing is the second highest demand concern than childcare and then public transportation. So the top four right there. So if you guys are building the housing for us, we'll get the workers for you to fill these spaces, hopefully.
And Dave will get us the childcare, right?
Yep.
Good deal. Any questions? Thank you, Greg. It was a very nice presentation.
Thank you.
Moving on to new business, statistical reports. Chief, you're on the clock?
I'm on the clock.
Huh?
I'm on the clock, right?
Good evening. For the month of April, we had 43 calls for service. So that brings
our total for the year up to 178. And just a snapshot over the past nine days of this month already, we've got 20 calls. So we are busy. But things are good. We're busy with calls, but things are running very smooth. So as you can see, we had a couple of fires last month. Nothing that was of any major, just a small fire on a stairway wall at the apartments. And then the other one was just a kitchen fire. So I'd say just a kitchen fire caused a little damage, but thankfully we got it out in time. Any questions on the report for the month of April?
Hearing none. Thank you. Keep up the good work. Sergeant, good evening.
Good evening, everybody. Yeah, month of April was busy for us as well. The biggest increase is driver contacts, which is what we want. So as you can see, if there was anybody that drives to the city in the morning or in the afternoon, they notice a significant increase in traffic. So the guys are out there, our main guys are just doing a great job of driving enforcement as well. So you saw the radar sign that was on 32nd. We're still working on installing the second one for doors on 32nd as well. But it's a great deterrent. It's fun watching the people slow down, especially when you're driving behind them. It's just fantastic. So we're working on great. The speed trailer is also on. It's on a barrier right now. So we'll start to move that around every three days. Couple things. Deputy Potma finally received his new car. Been waiting for about eight months because of supply chain issues, and he finally got his car last week. So he's very excited. One other highlight is I attended a victim services unit conference in Traverse City for a weekend. I got to go with about 6,000 victim advocates from the sheriff's office. So it was a good time. So that's all I have. Unless you have any questions.
Are we at full capacity now with our vehicles? We're back up to where we need to be?
Yeah, right where we're supposed to be.
All right. So that was the last car we were waiting for.
Yep.
Is the county, did they all get, because I know the county as a whole is waiting for cars too, right?
We got four recently that were taking care of the U-Paul incident. They're all fixed. So now we're just waiting on the other ones to see if they show up.
And they're all black?
All black, yep.
Any questions? Thanks, Sergeant.
Good evening. Something I need to highlight on my report, the Department of Staff meeting that I already talked about, we're looking at changes to the EOC in the, some this fiscal year, some next fiscal year. If we're using what, I've got less than my budget for this fiscal year to get a white board and a television up on the wall so we can mount the local media during the incident. Then next fiscal year, we're looking at replacing the flooring. If you've been down there, the flooring is, that's a bit, chairs, so chairs are starting to become, you know, you lean back and you do this thing, right? And then as part of that, we're doing to also reorganize the workstations for better information flow, better positioning of where people are so that if we do have something going on with EOC, people aren't going to be tripping over each other and they'll have the information you need in front of them. And I'll just kind of improve the overall workflow in the facility.
Question if I may interrupt you. I thought we needed a new air handling system in there. I don't see it on the list. The AC or?
Ah, yeah. Actually, Mike has that on his list as part of improvements he's doing down there. So yeah, that wasn't something I asked for. I talked to Mike. He said, no, don't worry about it. So we got that covered. So, but yeah, you're right. We, yeah, we need a little ventilation down there too. The only other thing I want to mention is I, one thing I did not put on the report was we did have a severe thunderstorm on April 20th. I didn't put it on here because we just monitored it. There was nothing for us to do during that time. It was mid-evening, I guess it was, and kept an eye on what was happening, but as often happens, we got on what was happening, but as often happens, we got a lot of flashing and booming, but not a whole lot of actual severe weather. Any questions or comments?
Oh, the sirens work?
Yes. We actually, just this past Friday, we activated sirens from the EOC downstairs.
And I also understand CSX is going to be here. We're going to have a little work session?
CSX is coming in June.
October, July, and June.
Okay. And you guys are coordinating that with Tyler? And we're all invited, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, we look forward to that.
All right.
Dave, do you have staff at Tulip Time this week?
Um.
You briefly mentioned it in your, in your report, but I didn't know.
Yeah. So I have, actually, I don't think I have anybody available for Tulip Time. I'm going to be out of town this weekend. And usually, we have just a couple of amateur radio operators who go out there and help. But none of my staff are actually available this weekend.
Any other questions for Dave? Keep up the good work. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Moving on to the city's treasure monthly report for March two thousand twenty-three. Kayla, you're up.
Okay, so the first report is the general fund summary. So for the month of March, we're at sixty-six point eight-four percent of our budgeted revenues and fifty-five point nine-one percent of our budgeted expenditures. Revenue summary, so for the month of March, we brought in forty-one thousand nine dollars. And then that brings our revenue to date to four million three hundred fifty-four thousand seven hundred ninety-one dollars. Expenditure summary, we expensed two hundred fifty-one thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars, bringing our year to date to three million eight hundred nineteen and one dollar. On our investment report for the month of March, there's a lot of activity here. So the four CDs at the top that are in orange were actually matured. And so I reinvested them in a few different banks. So, the one from Horizon Bank got reinvested with them. It used to be a point eight-eight rate, and the new investment rate is five point zero five. The ones with Consumers and MSU Federal Credit Union, I did not renew with them, but we were able to get one with, we got a bond with FHLMC, and then a CD with CIBC Bank. Both have branches here in Michigan, and at five point two percent, and then one at five point six-two-five. And then the last one, First United Credit Union, that one kind of expired at the end of the month, so you will see it until the April report. But overall, for the month of March, we made eighteen thousand five hundred thirty dollars and four cents in interest, and our average rate of return was three point zero one. Any questions on that report?
I just wish our expenses weren't going up as fast.
I know. I try to make us as much money as possible, but we do have some big projects.
Anything else? Good observation. Thank you. It's going to be interesting discussion next week, budget. Hearing no other discussion, I will ask for motion to confirm payment of the bills.
I'll make a motion to confirm the payment of the bills in the amount of four hundred and sixty-three thousand seven hundred twenty-four dollars and thirty-four cents, and to confirm payment of bills paid between meetings and reviewed by the finance committee.
I'll second that motion.
It's been movement supported. Discussion on payment of the bills. I do notice that you guys do ask a lot of questions when you approve those weekly bills. And I think that's appropriate that we just, you're interested in, you're asking the right questions. So I appreciate you doing that.
It's not our money. We have to, we've got to watch it extra close.
Yeah. Roll call, please, city clerk.
Commissioner DeVry?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Bullheiss?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Groot?
Yes.
Lorar?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes. Moving on to item thirteen, ACH funds distribution. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to confirm the funds distributed by Automated Clearing House in the amount of ninety-seven thousand two hundred and fifty-four dollars and seventy-seven cents, which were distributed between meetings and reviewed by the city manager.
I second that motion.
It's been movement supported. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, please, clerk.
Commissioner DeVry?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Bullheiss?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Groot?
Yes.
Lorar?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes. Moving on to administration, item number fourteen, Terrace Square rates. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to authorize the adoption of Terrace Square event and market space rental rates as drafted and effective immediately.
Support. It's been movement supported. Tyler or Terry, did you want to discuss this? I think you guys did quite a bit of legwork here to come up with these new rates, right?
Mr. Mayor, I appreciate the Terrace Square Advisory Board and the dialogue brought forth by Terry. It was a very fruitful conversation, looking at forecasting and positioning Terrace Square to be as successful as possible. So, Terry, kudos to you, and thank you commissioners for your involvement on that committee as well.
Any questions?
And you did quite a few comps on that, I think, it looked like.
Yeah, we had three new vendors, or venues that have opened up in the last eighteen months, and price comparison, we're still under where norm is. So I feel comfortable with the request that they will be done.
How, how rented out are we for the year now, weekends?
Current, current to date, or fiscal year? Because fiscal year, we only have another month and a half. We're pretty much as much as we're going to do.
Right. What about the next year?
Calendar year, we probably have about maybe twelve dates that I would like to still fill, and they're still filling.
Out of fifty-two? Or out of how many?
Out of, yeah, yeah, under weekends.
Wow.
And then we're booking into twenty twenty-five. Actually have two people looking at purchasing here until we get everything finalized, the twenty twenty-five contracts. I'm holding off on it until today.
Are they mostly Saturday weddings?
They vary, as Fridays and Saturdays. Yeah, twenty twenty-four is booking up pretty well, too.
It's a wonderful city asset.
Yes.
It really is. People really appreciate it.
Thank you.
How many ask for the discount being residents?
Very few.
Very few, mostly?
Yeah, most of them realize now that if they actually live in the city, because we ask what their address is, because it, most people think they live in Hudson. No, but when we ask where they're, pay their taxes, that's the deterrent. So, we don't really plan, let's make a deal like we did three or four years ago. They're pretty much educated now.
Good.
Mr. Mayor, if I may add one thing, I believe it was a week and a half ago, Terrace Square, under Terry's leadership, held their first bridal expo. And I did attend that. And while I was not a raffle drawing winner, I had a fantastic time. The vendors were great. It was a really good, really good first-time event. So kudos, Terry, to your staff. As someone soon to be married, I did enjoy myself. And I appreciate you walking me through, Terry. So, thank you.
It was also a buzzword around my house with my daughter and her friends who are getting married, too. They were all excited to go.
Good. Did they come?
Yeah.
Good.
Did you feel it was a success from your side?
For the first time, we ended up, we didn't have any expectations. We were hopeful. We had over fifty brides actually register, and we figure about two hundred and fifty guests in addition. We've already received last, as of last week, we received three actual referrals from the Act Twelve, from people who've walked through it. And we've done two out of the three tours. So.
I'd say for a first year, that's pretty good success.
The vendors absolutely loved it. They want to do it again. We were kind of, I know Tyler and I dialogued about why I had the account that I did for the vendors. It was more to keep it more intimate. We don't want to compete with the downtown Grand Rapids because it's too big. And that's exactly what our vendors said. They loved the dialogue that they were able to have with the guests. So it was, everybody loved it. Didn't really have any complaints. But I'm all right.
You could have gone.
You could have too.
Terry, I wasn't able to be there for that event, but I was at the Habitat event hosted today.
You sure?
And I just appreciate not only the addition that their project was, but their ability to showcase it in a city space and just getting people to see all the new growth. That's all the GPS from Lake Shore Advantage terms, all the growth here. That's awesome. So thank you.
Thank you.
Terry, farmers market starts when and what days?
June seventh this year. It's a little later because the first is on Thursday. So the first Wednesday is the seventh. And I'll be happy to report that this is the biggest year yet since the city's taken over the farmers market. We are starting the season off with thirty-two vendors.
And it's on?
Thirty-two.
On Wednesdays?
On Wednesdays. No Saturdays this year.
No Saturdays. It's Wednesdays from nine to one?
Nine to one. Yeah, June through September.
Is that both sides of the parking lot then?
Not yet, but it might be. We'll see. I'm getting very creative on what we're putting vendors.
Are you selling any spices there this year?
Yes, we are, actually. Yeah, you should try it. It's pretty good.
I think I have, I, I have a cupboard full, just for the record.
Yeah, and out of those thirty-two vendors, I think, I don't know where our board is, but I think eighteen new ones?
Wow.
Yeah. Yeah, we actually have a lavender farm that's joining in this year.
Cool. Any questions for Terry? Keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's a motion on the floor. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Groot?
Yes.
Bullheiss?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
DeVry?
Yes.
Lorar?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes. Motion carries. Moving on to Apex Controls REIFT application. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve resolution number two-three dash one-seven-six-seven to set a public hearing for June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three to consider the request of Apex Controls for an industrial facilities exemption certificate.
Second the motion.
It's been movement supported. Tyler, are you familiar with this one at all?
I'm being caught up quite a bit, working with Greg and Jill.
Who was on the one ninety-eight?
I am.
Committee that's you.
I unfortunately missed that meeting. Jules Schmucker chaired that one in my absence.
Yeah, any feedback?
But I talked to her, read the minutes and talked to Jules as well. And it was unanimous that they supported the approval here tonight. And they're excited about what Apex is doing.
How many jobs is that looking at? There are like thirty of them?
Excuse me, they're looking at thirty over the next three years.
That's good. It's a good company.
It's a great partnership with the city.
Right.
The, the use there is a great fit for what they're doing with where they're at. And they could have chosen to expand their business outside of their current location too, but they chose to stay in Hudsonville. And I think we should celebrate that, so.
Any other questions on the motion? This is just to hold the public hearing at the next city commission meeting, correct?
Yes.
Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Groot?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Bullheiss?
Yes.
DeVry?
Yes.
Lorar?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes. Moving on to item seventeen, IT service provider bid award. And is there a motion? I know there was a lot of work behind this one, so. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to award a one-year contract with transition fee for IT services to DuPont for a total of sixty-one thousand one hundred and four dollars.
Second. It's been movement supported. I guess the only question I had was why one year? Why didn't, was that, was that what they asked for? Is that what we're looking for?
Through discussions with us, with these firms and the state of IT, I have a feeling do it one year, see how it works out. But we have a feeling we'll be between six and nine months.
It's a pretty volatile industry right now, IT is, as we all know, so.
Where are they located?
Lansing.
Lansing, yeah.
They have the office in Grand Rapids.
There's a total of nine, nine firms, which was a very healthy number. We interviewed three of those. I think we had three phenomenal finalists. The dialogue was great. Appreciate Dave Dahl working on that committee as well, letting his expertise on it. But at the end of the day, the, the group was unanimous that DuPont was the direction to go, factoring cost, level of service anticipated, and looking at their client references.
I didn't know you were on that committee, Dave. Thank you.
Yeah, I've been at you guys for thirty-six years, so.
But we tapped into the right resource.
Oh, he was an integral part of our success.
They couldn't, they couldn't, they couldn't snooker us, huh?
I'm sorry, you're good.
They didn't, they couldn't snooker us. They couldn't fool us, huh?
No, they, they seem to have a lot of trust in us.
Good. Any other questions on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, please, clerk.
Commissioner DeVry?
Yes.
Groot?
Yes.
Bullheiss?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Lorar?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes. Motion carries. Moving on to appointments to boards and commission. There is one here for the library advisory board. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the mayor's appointments to the boards and commissions as listed.
Second the motion.
It's been movement supported. This is a new member for the lib, library advisory board. Have you met her, Phil? Do you know?
I have not met her.
Okay. I, I did talk to Melissa, and she was just really thrilled to get this, somebody this kind of talent and insight on the board, so.
I would trust Melissa's.
So she really, unfortunately, the phone number wasn't on the application, so I would have called the, the applicant myself just to congratulate her. But maybe if somebody can call up with her and just say that.
Yeah, Melissa and Nancy and I met. We had a great hour discussion prior to this, looking over roles and responsibilities. And Mr. Mayor, this is actually redacted, so we'll go ahead and get you.
Yeah, I, I don't, well, it'd be just nice if I called her and.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And we did invite her tonight. Unfortunately, she couldn't make it. She was babysitting her grandson.
That's fine. Any other questions on this motion? Hearing none. We'll just go for a voice count. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those post names, sign. Motion carries. Before I ask for an adjournment, I just have a list of several things here, then I'll go down the dais. It is Employee Appreciation Week. I did send a note to Tyler to send out to the staff, thanking them for their continued support as city employees. And I believe you had the luncheon, was it today? Tomorrow?
Thursday.
Thursday, okay. And there's a Thursday luncheon at the DPW at?
Eleven-thirty to one.
Eleven-thirty to one. Commissioners are certainly invited and encouraged to attend. There will be the open, there'll be the Memorial Day Service at ten o'clock on Memorial Day. And then all the commissioners are certainly invited to my house. There'll be an open house following. I would think that anybody in attendance would be, would be sobered by some of the comments that will come out of this, this year. So if you have veterans or members that were once service members, I would encourage you to attend. Ribbon Cutting is one tomorrow at four o'clock. It's called Leaping Panda, I think's the name of it, which is a new hobby shop in the former Kingston building. That's at four o'clock. Our next meeting will be the budget review at six o'clock on five fifteenth?
Yeah, next Monday.
Next Mon, next Monday?
Yep.
At six PM. I would expect that would go probably two to three hours. They go along. If you don't have a copy of the budget, you haven't made one yourself, please talk to Tyler or Kayla and get a copy made. If you do copy it, I would recommend you copy it on two sides of the paper, since there's quite a bit here. So I would expect all the commissioners to have a chance to review that prior to the meeting. And maybe if you had any specific questions to talk to Tyler before the meeting. Roadwork pending. Do we have any updates on the roadwork coming? Any?
Bob Miller and I have a pre-construction meeting tomorrow at three-thirty with regards to the Fortieth Avenue resurfacing, resurfacing project. And that is the update that I have this time.
We've been hammered with the traffic because the interstate interchange being closed in Zeland. So it's, is that all summer, do you know?
All summer, I thought.
Oh, jeez. Chicago Drive is just wicked now. They're really, and Highland's not much better. The Hudsonville Flats, do we have a date when Scotten plans to break ground or not? Or not? Do we know a date?
Yeah, next month, so we have plenty of whiskey.
Oh, that's okay. So we.
So we don't have a date yet?
We need to roll on the schools.
Is that the final hearing at the next planning commission?
Yes.
It doesn't have to come back here, does it?
No.
So, once he's through that, he can make great, break ground, hopefully in June?
Yes.
I think that, I think that's what it said in the information.
Okay. And then Terrace Station, I know that you're still working pretty closely on that, Tyler.
Yeah, we had a meeting. We talked about it a little bit today as part of a grander scope of economic development projects. But Dan and I put together, have put our heads together trying to find additional funding, but working with Chris Metacloson. And I think Dan and I will meet early next week. And hopefully I'll have an update for you after that.
I want to thank Commissioner David Nitre for the tour we got with the Parks and Rec Committee at his workplace there, the Outdoor Discovery Center. And I think he and I are going to sit and talk and brainstorm some ideas. But I would expect sometime, we can maybe even look to have a work session out there with the commissioners and just brainstorm a little bit about doing something on a smaller scale here. But Dave and I are going to be talking. I'm sure we'll come back to commission at some point with Tyler.
It's fun to host, you know. Thank you.
And I think that is all I have. Dobbin?
I have nothing to add.
Bob's not here, but I wanted to thank the facilities group for taking care of Hughes Park so well. I came right from a Little League game there. It's amazing just to see a bunch of kids having fun, running around and enjoying the amenities the city has to offer. So, that's my thanks. That's my thanks.
In light of our traffic and construction project we had about two weeks ago on the way to the Terrace Square open house today, I was coming down Balsam from Love Inc., southbound. Green light, north and southbound. A semi truck out of the service drive turns left. Slowly, there is a lot of screeching of brakes, like we need to fix that. That was bad.
Yes, it is. Anything else?
Nope.
Larry?
No, I wouldn't want to add to that.
Yeah?
Nothing, no.
Jack?
Nothing.
Kayla? Jill?
DPW open house is next Wednesday, one to five, if you're interested.
So it's in the mind.
Is that on social, uh, the city's social media sites?
I would assume so.
Yes, there is.
It's always a good turnout for that, so particularly if you have kids, it's, uh, grandkids. Anybody in the audience like to address or bring anything else up? Now's your chance. And Tyler, you're up.
Want to thank the city's wellness committee, uh, for the, some of the cool interactions we've had with, uh, Public Employees Appreciation Week. Um, specifically, uh, staff, uh, department heads filled out a, uh, accomplishments and big wins of the past year. It was fun for me as, uh, one of the city's newest employees to read back and see some of the successes from staff in this, uh, from this year. Um, and looking forward to the cookout on, uh, Thursday. Also, uh, last week was National Clerks Week, and I wanted to, uh, throw some kudos out to Jill for running a, a safe, efficient, and accurate election. There's so much that goes into that. Um, I encourage any members of the commission or members of the audience, uh, if you're ever curious on how the inner workings of election works, I know Jill would gladly open the doors to her office and go through there, uh, bring some water and a positive attitude, um, because you're going to be there for a couple hours. Jill, kudos to you, and thank you.
And elections are under the microscope, Jill, I don't, um, I don't, uh, envy you in the least, given the state of hysteria over elections, so we know that we do a good job, and you're doing a good job leading them. Anything else? Hearing none, I'll ask for motion to adjourn.
Some moved.
Second.
It's been moved and supported, did you get two supports there, did you get them both, Jill? All those in favor, adjourning, say aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.